Hey, Robin, you ready?
Uh, sure.
Okay, if everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is saying, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, July 28, 2021, to order. This is a regular meeting of the City of Milton Planning Commission, and I am Sumit Shah, chairperson. This is a seven-member commission appointed by the City of Milton Mayor and City Council, created for the purpose of holding public hearings and making recommendations on rezoning, use permits, concurrent variance applications, comprehensive land use plan, and plan map, and other related plans, and amendments to the zoning ordinance. I'd like to go ahead and introduce the board members that are here today. We have, to my left, Fred Edwards, Zach Middlebrooks, Kurt Nolte, again, I'm Sumit Shah, Ron Gilbert, and Jan Jacobus. Marty Locke is absent for today. The petitions will be heard in the sequence listed on the posted agenda. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures conducting this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition.
Excuse me, Chair. You don't have to do that one.
Okay.
You can just go ahead and do the preliminary plat.
The preliminary plat?
Yeah.
Sure. I'll move, since the agenda items for today are just going to be two preliminary plats, then we'll skip the rest of that and just move over to that. The Planning Commission is tasked by the city subdivision ordinance to conduct a public hearing on proposed preliminary plats that have been found to be complete by the Community Development Department. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Planning Commission is required to review the proposed preliminary plat and provide comments and make recommendations regarding the plat to the Community Development Director. The Planning Commission does not approve or reject the proposed preliminary plat, but merely provides comments or recommendations based on the public hearing and the Planning Commission's review of the proposed preliminary plat. Robin, are we also having anything on Zoom today?
No, we no longer utilize Zoom. We're good.
Okay, perfect, okay. Then at this time, I'd like to open up the public comment section.
So, we don't have any general public comment?
Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of the action minutes from the April 28, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Do I have any discussion or any motions regarding that?
I move we accept the council meeting of Wednesday, April 28, 2021.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the action minutes from April 28, 2021, and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those, we'll go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of that approval for the action minutes of April 28, 2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously, and we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the preliminary plats. The first one is the Towns at Crab Apple.
Which is actually Towns at Milton. I had Crab Apple on my head, so, excuse me. So, anyway, let's... Okay, so, we have a preliminary plat, uh, submitted before you. It's located on the north side of Brannion Trail within the Crab Apple Form-Based Code. It's Zone T4 Open and T4, it's split, contains a total of 2.1 acres. The existing use is undeveloped. The proposed use are 14 fee simple townhomes, and the owner developer is Orkin and Associates here to represent the applicant. And, again, is to subdivide 2.1 acres into 14 units at a density of 6.67 units per acre. So, we'll go here, and it actually is already developed, and I'll have a few pictures to represent that. But this is the site plan, or the preliminary plat that's been submitted. And as you can see, there's five townhomes flanking on each side of the open space are green, and then there's four here. And then, this Brannion Trail is being extended, or actually is already extended as a private road, that that's the access, also already exists for the property. This area here has already been developed, as far as the parking and the driveway. Buildings on the north side of it, and city halls over to the east. And then, um, those are the details. So, here's some pictures. It's already graded out, and this is on the western side of the site here, and you can start to see, this is the overhead utility line easement on the west side of it. And then, this is looking south toward Brannion Trail, and here are some of the buildings that have been developed, mixed-use buildings. And again, this would be the green open space. Crab Apple Crossroads Subdivision, and this is their alley just behind here, the vegetation between the alley and the subject parking that have been developed. So, based on the submitted site plan, the proposed preliminary plat meets the requirements of the applicable city codes as they pertain to the development of the subject site. With that said, with the Crab Apple Form-Based Code, there are allowances for warrants to be issued by the Community Development Director, and those warrants have been issued or approved for building setbacks, as well as, that include the setbacks, as well as lot coverage, and each civic space shall have a minimum of 50% of its perimeter confronting one or more thorough affairs. So, that was another warrant that was issued. And then, the setbacks were, front setback 10 feet to 30 feet, and it went to zero, and the secondary setback is eight feet to 20 feet, and it went down to zero. So, that is staff's presentation, so if Planning Commission has any questions for me before the applicant comes up to either present and/or answer questions, and then after that, we can have comments from the public.
I guess I just have one. Under the T4 Open, the T4 Crab Apple Form-Based Code, what is the maximum they could put per acre? What is that? Because this is where, like, six and a half...
The density, you said?
Yes, density-wise.
So, the density is five, but the applicant, part of this development is the public garage, and that they're issued a density bonus of, for each parking space, they are allowed four units. So, the parking deck that is across the way is part of the overall development, and that that was the allowance for the ex, by allowing it to be a public parking structured deck, then they were granted additional density for their development.
Thank you.
Robin, obviously, from looking here at these pictures, this area has already been stubbed in.
Correct. So, there you, had formerly been another plan, actually, for additional units a few years ago, but since then, when the applicant has reduced it down to 14, but it was part of the land disturbance permit that was done in association with the mixed-use commercial. And initially, the thought was to do it as condominium-type development, and then therefore it wouldn't be required to do a preliminary plat if it was condominium. But the applicant is intending to sell it to a builder that needs it to be fee simple or single, I mean, that each townhome unit will be fee simple and owned by each individual instead of as a condominium. And that's why they went ahead and stubbed in the sewer pipes and the infrastructure with the intent that it was going to be condominium, but now it's going to be fee simple, and therefore that's why we're before you, because you're creating more than three lots.
Okay. Robin, could you explain again the whole, the warrant process, and, you know, how that allowed the setbacks?
So, within the, both the Crab Apple and Deerfield Form-Based Code, there's different types of variances, and warrants are permitted in the code. It's a warrant, or it's administrative variance, that allows the Community Development Director to administratively approve variations from the requirements of physical elements like setbacks. And so, based upon the configuration and the design, and providing the green space, the Community Development Director approved the variances or the warrants for the setbacks, the lot coverage. So, again, when it was going to be condominium, you didn't need to deal with the lot coverage, but once you do individual lots, then that came into play where it exceeded the 70%. And then, trying to put the buildings in, in the appropriate place, the setbacks were also needed, the reduction of the building setbacks for the front and the rear.
Was that Bob that...
I'm sorry.
Was Bob the one that issued the ones?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And I have his approval letter here, if you want to see it.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions before the applicant?
And then, let me just also add that we're working with the builder, with the architecture. We kind of have the general, you know, height and all that, but we haven't pinned down the architecture. That's why I didn't bring it before you, although this is a preliminary plat. I would have liked to be able to say, hey, this is what it's going to look like. But any design has to conform to the Form-Based Code architectural requirements, and then there will, each building set of units will go to the Design Review Board for the final approval of the design.
But we won't see it again.
You won't see it again, no. But the design will be ultimately approved by the Design Review Board.
Design Review Board.
Yeah.
And then, so, for parking, all the parking is just on the outside around this complex?
They will have parking within each unit.
They will.
I believe it's two.
Okay.
But this is also for guests. And then, obviously, if anybody else wants to park there that overflows, they can, but, you know, we thought it behooved them to have some parking for guests, so it wouldn't be blocking streets, so.
And they can park at that garage, too?
Correct, right, exactly.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions so far? Yeah, okay.
Okay. Do you have any questions for Mr. Rowe? Josh.
Yeah. All right, I'm going to give a little bit of an introduction of who we are, and then hand it over to Steve, the expert. So, my name is Josh Barnes. I'm at 12650 Crab Apple Road, Milton, Georgia, office right across the street. I'm with Orkin and Associates, the developer and owner and investor in Crab Apple Market. We're a third-generation, family-owned company with deep roots in Milton. Our partners live in Milton. We have significant holdings in Milton. We're very invested in this community. We built the green, built the, we're building this stage, we're building all Crab Apple Market. So, we're very concerned about the aesthetic and this community. So, this project, this portion of this project, E. B. Little history on it, we originally sold to a previous builder who was going to build 18 condo units in three larger buildings. They were going to be three stories and four stories, and so, had some personal changes in his life, and so he elected not to do that project. And so, it's, it would have been the same project as across the street in Affaretta, that's right on the detention pond and Crab Apple Station. And we bought the project back and found a builder who has done a lot of homes in this area in Crab Apple Station, and they want to do 14 townhomes. We do not do residential. We do commercial. We develop commercial. And so, we actually worked with our neighbors, came up with a plan for moving, this was years ago, moving the detention pond, so we can not have those homes facing detention ponds on either side. Worked with them, improved the detention, their existing detention pond, and negotiated a payment for them, so they could make some other improvements. So, we worked with our neighbors, and we'll continue to do so. Our offices is open, always open to answer questions, and so, we'd like the opportunity to do these 14 townhome units. Fee simple is very important to lenders these days, and fetching a better, higher price for the community. And it's important to note, too, that part of the reason for the warrants is we wanted to do a kind of town square for the green, and do the language of the ordinance, Crab Apple Form-Based Code. It just wasn't working out that well, so we needed a few warrants to get that. Our vision is to replicate Ruskin Park in Seaside. I don't know if you're familiar with Ruskin Park. And so, that's our goal, and this preliminary plat would allow us to sell to Waterford. And then, we'll be back, well, I won't be, but Waterford will be back in front of the Design Review Board to show their product that they're working on. So, I'll hand it over to Steve if you have any, you know, technical questions.
E. Rowe, AEC, 50 Warm Springs Circle, Roswell, Georgia. Yeah, both, between Josh and Robin, they've both handled the site plan well. I'm here to answer any technical questions or comments you may have on the site plan.
It's not a tactical, but roughly, what would the cost of these two, person buying these townhomes?
Probably around $800,000, starting, depending on, you know, the cost of lumber. Go up.
Understand.
Which way are they, they're going to be facing, the front outward, right?
Yeah, they're all, they're all going to face the green.
Okay.
Correct. And they're, they're, the driveways and the garages are actually a level below.
Okay.
So, it kind of tucks underneath.
And then, the green is just going to be an open space? Is there anything going to be in that?
We haven't fully developed the design on that yet, but it'll have, it'll have trees, landscaping, but mainly green open space is the idea. We didn't want to get, get too detailed in that at this stage. Once, once we've got the architecture in place and see how it kind of relates to the homes, then we can get into the details with them.
Anybody else got any questions?
Nope.
Nope. Are there any other comments from the public?
Um, we do have one. Marcia O'Shaughnessy.
Okay.
Huh? You can do it.
I live in the neighborhood.
One, two, yeah, you got, say your name and address.
I'm Marcia O'Shaughnessy. I live at 104 Nakoma's Place. I'm friends with Marlisa. So, I live in Crab Apple Crossroads, and right now, there's, the access to Brannion is gated. Is it going to stay gated? So, is, is our neighborhood your access to Crab Apple Road, or is it out onto Heritage?
Heritage Walk.
Okay. So, how tall are these buildings going to be?
They're still in the works.
Two stories on a basement garage, right?
And then, the garage will be a drive under garage, so from the back, we'll be...
Right.
It'll be a lot of crap.
Right. Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They won't be as tall.
So, unless there's anybody else in the audience who wants to speak? All the cards. Oh, okay, we'll, so if you want to speak, you need to, and... There's a lot of cards. That'd be awesome. Thank you.
So, thank you. I'm your neighbor next door.
Sir, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Pete Roland, 1930 Heritage Walk.
Perfect.
Next door to the development.
Okay.
So, I just have a couple of quick questions. So, what I'm more interested in is the development is perfect, you know? Orkin's been a great neighbor all the way through all the things he's already done. What I just want to know is, how are they planning on, you know, shielding us or developing the side, just from a privacy standpoint? I back up literally right to you guys.
So, let's do it this way. If you can lay out your couple of questions, and then I'll have Josh come back up, and then if you can speak into the mic, so that way...
Okay, cool. And second, I don't know what fee simple means. Maybe it's just, there's no HOA, but if somebody buys this place, if there's no HOA, or I guess restrictions on how they paint it, what they do, I just need to understand what that means.
Okay.
And that's pretty much it. I'm pretty straight.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, Josh, if you don't mind coming back up.
So, yes, there will, there will be a landscape buffer around the perimeter of the property. It's limited right now with what we've done because of construction, right? It, it's going to continue to get torn up, so we'll go back in and do planting around the perimeter. As you can tell, walking around, we're very concerned about landscaping. We spend way more than most commercial builders do on landscaping. Fee simple is how you own your house. It's, you know, you own your building and your land, right? Condominium ownership is typically walls-in, so fee simple, they'll own the, kind of a postage stamp around their townhome. There will be an HOA. The common area will be maintained by the HOA, or the landscaper that they choose, kind of like Crab Apple Crossroads. So, I think that was, was that all your questions?
Yeah.
No, there's, no, there's no room for that.
Yeah, no, that answers it.
Okay.
Okay, the next, oh, that's, sorry. Tom Ridenhour?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's it for item, the towns. Okay, great. So, it's back to you.
Towns at Milton, yes. So, nobody else has any other comments for the Towns at Milton? You do. If you don't mind filling out the yellow card. Okay.
Want to speak about this one?
Yeah, okay.
I'm Cheryl Hanley. I live in 12642 Atascowalk, which backs up to the property. When will this building start and when will it be completed? Because it seemed like it took forever to get the property where it is today. And I can tell you that it was always loud. There was always noise every weekend. And I just wanna know if there's a noise ordinance in Milton where they're not supposed to be developing at a certain time in the morning, both during the work week and on the weekends. So, I wanna know, when is it gonna start? When is it expected to be finished? And is there a noise ordinance?
Got it. Perfect. Okay. So, I'll let Josh and/or Robin answer it.
Yes, there is times of, a restriction to times of construction. So, let me just, no construction on Sunday. So, let me just double-check the times for you, so.
Okay.
I'll let you know. Don't wanna tell you the wrong thing.
On the weekends?
No.
Yeah, let me, I'll check that. Get into it. Give me a second. So, Monday through Friday at 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. Saturday, 9 a.m. to 6 p.m. No construction on Sundays or federal holidays.
And how about, when will the building begin?
So, you mentioned it's taken forever to get this point. And you're right, it absolutely has. So, the previous builder we sold to was doing the Alpharetta, I forget the name of the project. I don't know if you remember, the condo building that had six condos in it? That was along, facing the detention pond there or retention pond.
Yep.
It's that condo building behind Crab Apple Station. He was doing that, and that was not successful. He was not able to sell them, so he had to rent them. So, our project didn't start because he was scared to start it. Then, he had some personal tragedy I won't get into. And then, you know, a few years later, he said, you know, I really don't wanna do this project. And we said, okay, we'll buy it back from him. And, you know, it cost a lot of money to buy it back. But we did it because we felt like it was the right thing to do so we could control it. And now, we're closer with, you know, Waterford. So, once we get this approved, they're already working on, you know, getting their land or their building permits, plan sets, ready to go and submit for approval. Probably a couple of months, get that approved, and then they'll be building. So, then, they're gonna, they're gonna take down the first 10 on either side. And then, there's four behind, so they'll build those first four, or those, sorry, those first 10 and just keep going. And then, depending on how those sell, is when they'll start the last four. So, I imagine they're gonna sell really well. I mean, y'all know the residential market's crazy right now. So, it's probably gonna be another, conservatively, 18 months to finish. Maybe sooner than that. And then, they'll be done. But if you, if you have an issue with noise or something like that, we'll do our best to mitigate that. And I'll leave some business cards, so you can feel free to give me a call. And we can work with you on that.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions? We do have another one in the back. If you can please come up.
Hi, I live at, it's just on the street, 12737 Lakoma Trace.
And if you could just state your name, too.
Kyle Marshall.
Thank you.
And I do have a couple of questions. Which way will the condos face? Will, will we be looking at the backs of garages the whole time? Or will they go?
They're gonna be facing, the front will be facing the green, so the rear will be to the back will be facing you. But I wanna note that all architecture is 360 degrees. And we're very, very, very specific about what, how the whole building gets built. So, it's not just gonna be a flat wall or ugly. It's what we call 360 architecture.
All right. And where will the dumpsters and things like that for this condo go? Is it gonna back up to my property?
Yeah, it'll be individual.
Individual?
Yeah.
Okay. How about the drainage from building these? Right now, as far as I can tell, it all drains into this little drain near my backyard. It doesn't seem like that would be adequate for a whole condo association. That where it eventually goes. And will y'all be better about keeping up trash? I still have behind my house, old silt fencing, old dead branches, other trash that's been tossed there that I've been trying to find somebody to pull out of there because I'm too old to climb down to get it. And it's been, for nine months at least, maybe longer. Will you keep up with trash from construction? And there's no chance you could take Saturday off, too? We're really tired of the noise. Okay.
Thank you. Josh, if you don't mind coming up to the mic so everybody can hear.
We'll take a look at the trash, but some of the trash back there is actually on y'all's property and not on our property because property comes over the sidewalk like 10 feet or so. The silt fence is on our property. We've gotta keep the silt fence in until we can file the notice of termination of the state when the property is stabilized and there's a certain standard that they have so that, you know, you no longer have silt that's flowing into your pond. So, that, we will take that up when we can.
Yeah, if you don't mind coming, coming back up to the mic.
Unless you wanna speak to Mr. Barnes afterwards.
I understand you need silt fencing, but what's back there right now is old collapsed silt fencing and wooden stakes that are, it's just in piles all around. Okay, thanks.
The next person who wants to speak is Debbie Russell.
Hi, Deborah Russell, 1940 Heritage Walk. So, my question is based on, like, don't get me wrong, we love the new development, love Crab, but we're in one of the brownstones, so right across the street from it. And now, we're gonna have this construction going on behind us. So, one of my questions is about, so we had a lot of settlement damage in our house with the tamping and everything that happened for the Crab Apple Market over here. And so, now, I'm wondering, okay, what kind of equipment's gonna be brought in again? I mean, we literally just got all the dirt off our house. So, just trying to figure out, again, like, how they can keep it from the dirt, the dust happening all the time? And then, the, if it's gonna be tamping equipment and everything again? I mean, we just, we've got a lot of damage in our house. So, I'm just curious what's gonna happen, what's gonna become of it again?
Are you, are you referring to, like, there are big earth movers and things like that? Okay, did you contact, were you?
No.
Construction?
No.
Okay. Because some people were in contact with them and they tried to resolve that.
Okay. I have not talked to Cho.
Here, let me give you my business card so we can connect and then talk with Cho. Because if they didn't need damage, they wanna make it right.
Okay, that'd be great. And then, I'm sorry.
They are not, we're at a point where we're done, for the most part, with site work. We're gonna have some landscaping to do, you know, planting plants, things like that. But they might have some compaction, but not to the extent that Cho was doing because they did the whole site. So, now, these guys are gonna come in and they're gonna pour their foundations and go from there.
Because I know, I mean, I've been in this house since 2010. So, I know that was all trees before, when I bought the house. So, that's a ton of filter. I mean, that, it used to slope from the front to the back to the, and so, it's a lot of filter. And so, just hoping that it's been, you know, compacted. I mean, it's been sitting for a long time at that level, so hopefully, it's.
The filter is for the green component. That's not where the buildings are gonna be. Not where the foundation of the building should go.
Okay, so it shouldn't have to be. Because the basement's on the bottom, so. And then, just like, trying to keep straw stuff on, you know, things on the dirt and just trying to keep, you know, dust and dirt and everything that's gonna be blowing around the neighborhood, just if that could be.
And it shouldn't be nearly as bad as, you know, this guy.
It was, and like I said, do not get me wrong, we love it. We're real happy with it. But it's like, we're almost there. Let's get this, yeah, so.
Construction's not that fun for me either, so.
So, and I'll, I'll add that there's a couple of issues. I think it was major, major development with all the commercial buildings. And what is gonna happen with these condominium buildings are more like a house being built next to you because all, pretty much all the work has been done. And then, it'll just be hammers and wood and workers coming and going. It's not gonna be major like it was doing foundation work and, you know, garages and all that kinda stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, does anybody else have any other comment on this preliminary plat? Going once, going twice. Okay. Anybody else on the commission? All right. Okay, I think that.
We moved to, move the, or approved the movement of the preliminary plat to the council.
It's to the Community Development Director.
Community Development with all the comments that have been made from the public.
Okay, they'll be in the record.
Do you need a formal vote on that or anything like that, Robin?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you, do you need a formal vote or anything?
I think in the past, y'all have done, like, recommend, you have done, you're recommending to forward it on. So, you can do a vote.
Sure, yeah. So, I can take that, okay.
This is a motion.
Kind of a recommendation slash motion. Okay, anybody else wanna chime in on that?
Does that require a second?
I'll take the second.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay. So, we've got the recommendation on the table from the planning commission to take all the comments from the public into consideration and to move this forward to the Community Development Director. Anybody else have any other comments or discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Thank you so much, gentlemen. All right, next on the agenda is the preliminary plat for Heatherton.
Okay. The next item is, and I, I'm gonna make it bigger. Let's see. There it is. So, the next item is a preliminary plat submittal for a new sub, proposed new subdivision, Heatherton. This located at 1240 Mayfield Road. And it contains 33.99 acres. And the rec, the applicant is proposing to develop 21 single-family homes. The owner developer is North Point Capital Investment Holdings. And the site planners alliance engineering. So, with that subdivision, the density comes out to be .62 units per acre. This is the location of it right here in the red. It is currently zoned AG1. There's no change in zoning. It will remain as AG1. AG1 allows a minimum of one acre lots, although they can be bigger. This is the applicant's site plan. Let me try to make it bigger here for y'all. So, as you can see, it's just shy east of the roundabout that's in the city of Alpharetta. Actually, the right-of-way, the road is owned by the city of Alpharetta. So, this has been reviewed by the Transportation Department with the city of Alpharetta. And the improvements are based upon their requirements of coming off their road. You'll see this half-moon line, dotted line. That is a part of the area within it that is permitted to be sewed. And I have a sewer map later, I believe, after this to depict it as a whole. The applicant is only going to be sew, providing sanitary sewer, non-septic lots to lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21. So, those are, all the lots are 100% within the area that can be sewed. The remainder of the lots, the 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16 are gonna be served by septic or individual septic systems. Okay? Again, you'll see in the rear here is the detention area. There are no walls associated with that. It's all earthen berm or earthen slope. There is a stream that cuts through the back of it, but is not in the stream buffer. It's in the, a portion of it can be in the last 25 feet, which is non-impervious. You can grade in it. You just can't have impervious surfaces on it. So, this has also been reviewed by our plan review engineer. We've worked with the applicant on some issues that we had, and they've come back to be in compliance with our city regulations. As you can see, much of the property to the north is basically not being used. It's part of their common area, that's part of their detention. And then, you have a larger lot, Lot 11. And then, the remainder of the lots are around one acre in size. This is gonna be proposed as a private street. It will be gated. And so, the HOA will be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the road and not for the, the city of Milton. As you come in, there is a gate here in this area. And then, that way, you can turn around, just typical of many gated subdivisions. These houses along here, they're a little bit wider than, well, they're much wider. And the front of the houses will be facing toward Mayfield. And they will also be rear-loaded. There will be no driveways coming off of Mayfield. You would come in and take a left, and this is like an alley. And then, you would enter from the rear on both sides. And then, the remainder of the subdivision has the regular front entry. So, here's a chart just outlining the various lot numbers and the sizes. So, you can see here, Lot 11 in the back is 3.9 acres. And the rest of them are just around an acre. And they also meet the minimum lot widths, lot frontages, et cetera. This is. This is a part of the sanitary, the sewer map that Milton has agreement with Fulton County. So anything that's striped is permitted to have sewer on it. Anything that's green is not existing and cannot have that, any sanitary sewer. So based on the submitted site plan, the proposed preliminary plat meets the requirements of the applicable city codes as they pertain to development of the site. Here's just, I did want to, the applicant's here and he can walk through kind of all the aesthetics of it, but I did want to also let you all know that staff was originally concerned with, we have a regulation of no more than 25% lot coverage. And so many times with these one-acre lots, you have a large footprint of a, of a house, you have the driveway, you know, you have decks, and then everybody wants a pool, right? We have a million pools, so you have the pool. And so we worked with the, we asked the applicant to do an analysis of each lot and that they're showing compliance with being less than 25% impervious or lot coverage. So that is part of, we don't want, basically saying you will not be given any variances. You know upfront that this is what you need to do, because many times we do have variances going to the Board of Zoning Appeals to lessen or increase that lot coverage, many times to put in a pool. That's what we've been seeing. So that was one of the issues that came up with. But with that said, there is in your packet kind of a diagram showing the lot coverages. So that would, in my presentation, the applicant's going to go through probably some of this design work. But do you all have any kind of questions for me?
So those houses right there at the beginning, 1, 2, 3, 20, and 21, I know you've got that alley, but you go down the alley and then there's still driveways?
Right, so when you come here, there're going to be driveways coming in each one off the alley to the rear. So their, their garages are closer to the alley and the house is closer to the road. Yeah, so here's a driveway that goes into, you know, a courtyard parking, yeah.
At alley, we show, I guess it just stops at.
It does, and it meets the turnaround for the fire truck, so that, the fire marshal.
Which it says wire fence, most property, I guess, next to the roundabout.
Right, so right here, yeah, this wire fence. So basically this, you know, they're going to be required to be able to do, actually, I'm sorry. They're going to be able to fight any kind of fire along Mayfield. So if there would be a structure fire, they would do it.
I was going to say, there's no room.
Right, I'm sorry, you're right, but it would be accessed by Mayfield.
Robin, I don't see the information on the lot coverage.
Okay, I thought it was in there. Well, I apologize. I know that in our submittal there was, and maybe the applicant has it, or did you find it? There's so many pages.
The single sheet over here in like, you know, .2 font.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
I was looking for it also.
Yeah, that one with the.
Thank you.
Okay.
So Robin, does, does North Point Capital Investment already own this property?
They do.
Okay. And then, in terms of the development right now, like, all around the sides, there's no changes to the, I mean, these are the allowable setbacks.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no variances, there's no exceptions. It meets all the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. And I will say that Bob, our community development director, or you can ask the applicant, we ask and encourage for large lots. We do that every time we have a developer come in. We do everything we can to twist their arm, so to speak, to look at, you know, to consider doing large three-acre lots. So it's not that it wasn't for a lack of trying to provide larger lots, but it's per the zoning code that they're allowed to do one-acre lots. Any other questions? And then we can have the applicant come up if you don't, and then if you have more questions. And then I think we have a fair minute.
So is there, I had a question about, I mean, in terms of like, you know, are any large trees or, you know, heritage kind of, or anything like that on the property, are those still staying on the property? Or how are you guys, how did you handle that, if that's part of this property?
As you know, much of the front part of the property is fields and, you know, pasture. So basically, the regulation for the tree canopy is that they have to provide for AG1, one-acre lots, 58%, obviously, if you don't start out with 58% for the entire parcel, then you can't be made to add more trees. But for instance, in the rear, they will provide limits of disturbance with their land disturbance permit, and the arborist will review it for compliance with the tree canopy, which would include trying to preserve any specimen-sized trees. We don't really have any heritage trees at this point in time, but specimen trees would be asked to be preserved. And if for some reason it's in the middle of the house, then they would have to provide additional to replacement.
You know, and then also, I mean, I see like those wood barns, which are those?
The barns?
Yeah.
They would be removed, yeah.
They're, okay, so they would be removed?
Yeah, so everything will be a clean slate as far as structures on the property, yes. And I believe there's also a house on the southeastern section.
Robin, could you or make the public aware of responsibility as reviewing this?
Yeah.
As far as the plat is concerned versus looking to make the recommendation for changes and so forth.
Right, so per the subdivision ordinance, the purpose of bringing the preliminary plat to the planning commission, I think primarily is to allow the public to know about what might happen in the future, because a few years ago we didn't have it, and people would see bulldozers coming through. So that's why we've added this public participation environment of allowing people to come and see what's going on at the planning commission. And that ultimately, it's the community development director that approves the preliminary plat prior to any land disturbance or construction permits being issued for a piece of property. And as I stated at the end of my report, this plan does meet all the regulations of the zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, as well as I mentioned, we've reached out to Alpharetta for them to give us what we need to require them to do from a transportation point. So the purpose is really for you to look at it, to glean any kind of comments that you might have from the public. But at the same time, you know, if the preliminary plat does meet the minimum regulations, that it is really, this is a process that it goes through until it gets approved by the community development director, so.
And the fact that we will not see this again?
Correct, so the planning commission won't see it again. It won't go before DRB because single-family residences don't have, DRB doesn't have oversight on single-family. I will say that I forgot to say that there still is a rural 60-foot view shed, thank you, it's a long day. So here, we are going to work with the applicant to make sure. It's kind of a hard balance when you have an existing pasture. And we don't want the vegetation and the landscaping to become very formal, but at the same time, we want it to be more organic and use different types of plantings that are specific to Georgia and native plantings. So we do have oversight on that rural view shed of how it's going to look, so. Other than that, we don't.
Because conceptually, that, that looked like it's possible.
What's not about the rural view shed?
Right.
Um, I, I think we can work with them to make it not to be super formal, but to feel like it's something agricultural, as well as the individual houses, 1, 2, 3, 20, and 21 will also have architectural review by the city architects, which I'm sure the applicant's going to speak to the, to the design, because they've already brought on Stephen Fuller, who is a very well-respected architect, designer here in the southeast. So I don't see that to be a problem. But again, we will have architectural review of those front houses, so.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions for Robin? All right, allow the applicant to come up.
Okay.
Good evening, Tom Sharp, 1250 Baypoint Terrace, Alpharetta, Georgia. Robin did a great job of teeing up the, the property. It's 21 lots on 34 acres. We've tried to comply with all of the guidelines that were given to us by the city and worked with Bob on the architecture of the houses. We did enlist Stephen Fuller to draw all of the houses, just a vignette of what could be done. We're going to enlist him to draw individual houses as we go through. These will all be custom projects as we go into it. And with the landscaping and the other elements that you spoke of, we're happy to work with the city on all of that. I've got Tyler Marchman and David Edwards here to answer any technical questions that may come up, and good help, thank you.
Thank you. Have you got any questions?
Looks like a soil study's already been done on this.
Yes, sir.
And so, you know, and I think it all looks fairly good for septic according to the legend and all.
That's correct. And then we're going to utilize sewer on the front part of the project inside that. It also helps us save trees on each lot.
Okay, yeah, just my, my question or concern is if you look at, you know, 6 through 16, they're all probably as close to acres they can get.
Yes, sir.
What happens if during the, the surveying or the laying out, it comes out less than an acre? Or do you just adjust, you know, take some off of 11 or wherever?
We've had, we've had phase-three soils done throughout the properties. We're comfortable with that the septic's are going to work, going to work well, work as they should. If there's a problem, we can address it at that time.
Okay, because I guess my concern would be that any of these, you know, 1.00 acres ends up .999 acres, and.
Right.
Yeah.
That goes through the, the Fulton County Health Department that we've worked with on numerous occasions. We've done a lot of other neighborhoods in Milton on septic, so we're very well-versed at that.
Couple of questions that I have, and I'm sure then we'll have more as the public gets involved. But in all of this, what we'll, we call green space, how will that be around the stormwater system? I mean, is that just going to be agriculture, or is it going to be grass, mowed, taken care of by the homeowner association?
In the area, yes, sir, any area that's disturbed and proved will be, but the majority of that's going to be left natural. Up on the northern end of the property, that will be left in its pristine state as it is now.
So I know there was a, Robin had mentioned in terms of, there's nothing like surrounding that stormwater area? I mean, is there anything going to be kind of covering that area?
Well, we're going to plan it, you know, walls are not allowed, so it is an earthen structure, an earthen dam to, to hold the water. And then we'll plan around it and shield it as necessary.
Okay.
There's a male kiosk right there at the northern part of the cul-de-sacs. We'll have some separation there and have it landscaped and shielded.
Okay. And then the, I mean, is this, is the intent for the, the gate to be like, I guess, whatever the HOA may decide in terms of like security, or is it just going to be gates that they're just kind of coming in and out, or there's actually going to be somebody there?
No, there won't be a guard. It'll just be a gate that would be keypad-operated for the residents. There'll be a homeowner association that will control that, and it'll be for the, for the property owners inside the neighborhood.
And there's, in terms of the, coming off of Mayfield, the turn lanes or anything like that? Or, I know I saw something about that, but is there anything that's going to be changing off of Mayfield for the road itself?
We've met with the city of Alpharetta, and David Edwards, my associate, can speak to that. He met with them for that, but we've complied with their, their design.
Okay.
They said there was no need for an additional left-hand turn, I think.
Right, okay.
Just curious, what's the price point on these, after we heard what they're selling the townhomes for?
Yes, sir, well, probably starting around a million three. Yes, sir.
Just for a point of information.
Yes.
On Lot 11, which is, we received some comment from the property owner in the rear as it relates to horses.
Yeah, well, they'll switch back, yeah.
Do that?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, sorry.
They have to get back up here.
This again, a point of information for you as a developer.
Okay. 11, yes, sir, that's the largest lot in the back, yes, sir.
That, the comments, that is a horse farm there behind number 11, and concerns will be with the odor from the, I don't know how many horses that, or that stables and so forth. There will be odor.
That is the ambiance of Milton. Getting to smell some, some horse is good.
Early days, I served on a, sort of the same council in Indiana, and this came up in a very, very major situation. And the odor was getting to the homeowner.
Right.
And it became, answer was a homeowner that had the horses. In that case, it was not, it was hogs.
Right.
Was there before the house was built. So therefore, person that built that home just had to stand to smell.
Right, right.
So again, that's for you as a developer.
Okay.
In my experience.
Yes, sir.
It was quite ugly.
Right, right, well, hogs do smell worse than horses.
Right.
Well, we'll say that, a hog farm, you can smell a long way off.
We're protecting the horses, we are equestrian, they're very important to us. But that homeowner's going to have to understand that.
Got it.
Okay.
I don't have anything else.
Anybody else got any other questions right now before we take any public comment? Okay, thank you, well. Are there any comments on this, Rob?
Yeah, so. Yes, so Terry and Sherilyn Allen.
I'm Sherilyn Allen. We live at 12955 Bethany Road, but we also own 12915 Bethany Road. These are the first two houses on Bethany at the roundabout that has just been built. And we back up to, we're going to be back up to five of these homes. So our question is, of course, this is an old fence line that Mr. English put in. We don't know how many years ago. We've been in our house fifty years in February. So we've backed up to this beautiful property forever. The existing fence line, will that be torn down? Will there be a new fence line? Second, oh, is there going to be some kind of tree buffer for all of us? For the, us, you know, that have the five homes behind us? And since this is a gated subdivision, will this be completely fenced in? And that's basically my three questions right there. And why, why couldn't y'all have named it English Farms or something after, and to respect the Englishes who have lived there forever and raised their three sons there? Why come up with a name that we have no
Relation to.
Relation to? Why not change it to English and respect this family that has lived there and raised their cattle and their family and everything over all these years? So those are my questions.
Thank you. You want to go ahead and come up?
Yes, sir. Well, with respect to the David, the fence line, we've had the property surveyed. We will not fence the entire property. The individual homeowner that ends up on that property, on that, on those particular lots, may put a rear fence. We don't disturb, there is no disturbance of that area contemplated that back up to the Allen's.
Right, the existing fence would remain.
And we're, we're very sensitive to the fact that this property's been around for a long time. The English family has owned it for over seventy years, I believe. Prior to us purchasing it, Mr. English was a Greyhound bus driver and owned this property, bought it sometime in the nineteen fifties, I believe. And we've worked with the English family, you know, significantly to get this done, so.
Yes. Was there a question also about, I think one of her questions was about tree buffer?
So the ordinance, we don't require any kind of buffering in between single-family residential or even a farm. So we wouldn't require the applicant to do it. It would be up to each individual homeowner if they, especially in the area that is more of the pasture.
Okay. Do you mind coming back up real quick? Thank you.
There are existing trees on our back property, both of the two homes. And I know when they surveyed, it was kind of like it might have come over where our trees are into our yards. I mean, I'm not sure when Mr. English had that surveyed. Will we, our trees, will they be allowed to stay there? As we've looked out to this pasture, now, I know all the trees back in here will be gone. I know that. I've already talked to the lady for the tree committee. I was on the original tree committee, so I do know a little bit. But will our trees along our fence be disturbed?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
And, and we have a recent survey that I'm happy to share with you on the property. And we can have that property line flagged, and I'll be happy to walk you with you.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds good. Thank you.
Regarding tree removal, she said she backs to five lots on lots, except for the corner lot. Those are rear, and the setback's fifty feet. So we won't be getting into any of that. And on that first corner lot, it's twenty-five feet. We won't be getting into that. So any trees anywhere near property line will remain.
So I'll just also, when they come for their land disturbance permit, we can make sure that the limits of disturbance are keeping that disturbance. They're not going to disturb that area that they've committed to, so.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other, do you have any other comments on her questions? I know there was also something about the name.
I'll be happy to give it to them after.
Okay.
Rick Wheeler.
My name is Rick Wheeler. I live at 1265 Mayfield, which is right across from this development. I do have several questions, so I guess what I'll do is I'll, I'll rattle off the questions that I have. So when are we thinking this is going to start? And what is the duration of disturbance to the community? Are we talking, because I heard you say this was custom, some of these were going to be custom-built houses. So are we talking years? Are we talking, you know, a couple of years? Are we talking longer than a few years? So that's one question. The second question is the setback from the existing Mayfield Road. I think you said something about a rural view shed?
Correct. It's sixty feet, yes.
Sixty feet. And that's sixty feet, that sixty feet is from the existing road right now?
It would be from the right-of-way, which is even, it's probably ten to fifteen feet from the edge of pavement, then sixty.
Okay, so it is going to be setback, okay.
Yes.
So, so the, so the setback is, is sixty feet from that?
Right of way.
Right of way, the existing, the existing right-of-way.
Yeah.
Okay. So that question, I guess, has been answered then. The next question is, is that there is a series of power lines and other utility that goes there. Is that going to be relocated underground or will that remain above ground? And then, kind of, I know you said that the estimate was starting around one point three, but do we have a approximate estimate of the square footage of these particular houses? And then the tree density, currently that is a farm field, essentially. The bulk of it is, except for the far back. Will they be planting any trees to come to a fifty-eight, I think it was said fifty-eight percent tree coverage? And then the existing house, I heard was going to be removed along with the buildings. That's correct? Okay. And then there are two, and I know you were talking about heritage trees, I think you said?
Well, we have no heritage trees or specimens size.
Because there are some very large oaks in the front of the existing house, and I was just wondering if those are going to be, or just one of them, so. Anyway, those are my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler.
All right, so the start date, going through the, going through the LDP process, hopefully just two months, right? Two, four months, I'm just kidding.
I take the fifth. No, I didn't.
So a few months, you know, hopefully we get started out here in the late fall would be ideal. Infrastructure, roadway construction will take probably six months. There's not a lot here in terms of that. We're not touching the lots. We're just coming in, grading out streets, putting in sewer, sewer storm and water and detention pond. And then we sort of wrap that part up and get out. That's probably a six or an eight-month process to do that, record a final plat. And then after that, the home construction, to some extent, is contingent on the market. If the market is good and there's lots of orders, lots of houses get built at the same time. But if it's slower, for whatever reason. But I would think, you know, these homes will probably take a year each, but several run concurrent. Well, we'll, I'll let you come back to that and I'll go through the rest of mine. But anyway. So that's the duration. Setback from Mayfield is already answered. Power lines, we won't relocate along Mayfield Road, but when they hit the community door, front door, they'll go underground throughout the development on the inside. I'll let you do the square footage of the homes. And then tree density, there won't be a, we, we have identified the specimen trees on site. And again, the infrastructure for the streets is pretty limited, and we think we've dodged as many of the specimen trees as we can. And then on the house development side, there's freedom to try to move a home. Because obviously, a big specimen tree is accretive to home value. So you wouldn't want to knock it down and replace it with four smaller ones. So that will come down to sort of certain lot planning, trying to, trying to make everything happy with where the house goes, specimen trees, driveways and things like that. And then overall, the project will have to meet the canopy requirements.
What about these large trees in the front by the house, existing house?
We are certainly going to, going to try to keep those trees, the ones that are close to the existing home Mr. English lived in. There's some nice, large hardwoods there. We would love to be able to keep them. Once we get the plan fully developed, we can speak to that. The square footage of the houses is four thousand to six thousand. And they'll take, you know, anywhere from six months to a year, depending on the choices made by the person buying it.
So there are specimen trees then on the property?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, there's large, yeah. And then, right.
Okay. And are those noted on the preliminary plat or do they have to be?
They don't have to be, but I think that you've reached out your-
We've got a free survey of the property, and we know where the, the large specimen trees are. And we'll certainly do our best to, to preserve them.
Okay.
So I wanted to clarify too, the statement about the fifty-eight percent. So obviously, if they only have fifty-five percent lot coverage now, or fifty, whatever it is, I don't know what the lot coverage is. It's not like they have to go up to fifty-eight percent. They just have to keep whatever, maintain that fifty, whatever, whatever that number is. So, and obviously, if it's more than fifty-eight percent, then that's, that's great too, so.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Do we have any other comment?
Yeah. Friedland, Fredland? Yeah, on Bethany.
Peter and Patty, Fredland, 13005 Bethany. So can you, I'm not really sure exactly where we back up. I haven't been able to read clearly. I guess I'll let-
Oh, we're right here, in between ten and eleven.
So curious as to your entrance. It's only one entrance exit. I know a neighbor was approached about possibly maybe selling to make it a different entrance. So that's dead in the water? Is it, so that could come up possibly again, or? The area that's not developed, that, I guess, behind like eleven and, so lot eleven, but then what's behind ultimately like Tim and all that, that's undeveloped, natural. You said you're going to keep it natural?
Yes, sir.
The buffer, you, so as a, we have to put a fence up. It has to be the horse, so that's going to be required of the homeowners also, right?
So what's required is in AG1, that anything that's facing a road has to have a equestrian-style fence or can be seen from the road. But let's say if there's some lots that are internal that you can't see from Mayfield, then they're not required to do equestrian. It would be up to their HOA or whatever their requirements would be.
So our property, right after, the back edge of our property, it dips, the, the topography dips down quite a bit. Will there be any grading up or is the topography of the area staying much the same? We are backing up right between ten and eleven. So this is our property right here.
Right. We will not be grading that part, no.
Yeah, because-
I can't, they're doing, I don't have-
Can you put the map up on these screens? Please, thanks. Well, they've been asking several times, so. And sidewalks, so from once you develop on the outside.
Say about Alpharetta required? We, we don't require sidewalks, but it's not our right-of-way.
Oh, I know.
Oh, internal or external?
External.
External, yes.
They'll connect from what's already there, the roundabout.
It's the front of, of the, okay.
It was also mentioned that the cars exiting the development, are they able to make a left turn out going towards Alpharetta, downtown Alpharetta?
Yes.
So they will cross that line, double line to go as opposed to, so. They won't, because we were told they were going to have to make a right turn through the roundabout to go back down. No, so they'll be able to make the turn, okay. So I just thought that was kind of odd, but I'm not sure about that.
Okay. Thank you. Next comment?
The next speaker is Tom Ridenhour.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tom Ridenhour, 1505 Evers Edge Drive, Harrington Falls subdivision. We've lived there since nineteen ninety-nine, so we're not old-timers, but we've been around in the community and we love it. We live on the east side of, of this development. My concern is the trees. In the last ten years, I've become quite a tree lover. Ten years ago, I would have laughed and said, oh, who cares about trees? But believe me, I love trees, and I love the trees on this property. And what has happened with subdivisions that have been built on Mayfield Road is everybody wants to take the easy way, cut down all the trees, and then build your, your neighborhood. And I don't want to see that happen on any of these lots, because that, if you want to sell houses for a million three, you need some character, and trees give a lot of character. Now, more specifically, my concern is this creek that runs behind my property, which I think might be around lot seventeen or sixteen. Not a hundred percent sure on that, but that's a floodplain. And it goes up a hill on, on English's side of the property. It goes up a hill. And what I would like to know is how many feet back from that creek will those trees be preserved, number one? And number two, to the extent trees are taken down, will that hill be graded and lowered? So those are the two primary concerns. The third concern I had was the retention pond. And I see where that is, and that makes sense. Although, you know, I sometimes, I'm wondering why that retention pond isn't pushed back further north on the property to maybe allow a little more flexibility of the layout of these lots. And, and the other thing I'll say is that we had a subdivision go up in Alpharetta. And thankfully, Alpharetta took a stand for us residents and required some really nice buffers to maintain the aesthetics. And I just hope that Milton is really pro-citizen and looks at all of our concerns. And there has to be give and take. Developers just can't have carte blanche. And the guidelines, I know they're going to follow the guidelines, but I'm starting to question some of the guidelines. And it would be interesting to know what process it takes to make those guidelines more, in keeping with the, preserving the Milton, whatever you want to call it, what we've been seeing here for the last fifty years. And that's it.
Thank you.
So I'll, I'll speak to a couple of the items about the stream, the stream buffer. So as you, if you look at your site plan, and it's probably a little bit easier to look at the plan that had all the lot ratios, the lot coverages on, because they depicted the stream buffer on the backs of twelve and thirteen. So the center line, or not the center line, but it was called rusted vegetation. It could be the center line, it could be- It could be the center line, it could be the top of the bank. From the top of the bank, 25 feet is the state stream buffer, and then we have a city buffer, that's another 50 feet, so you can't encroach into that at all, you can't grade into it. So that whole 50 feet to the west is going to be preserved, as well as, some of it goes into the Alpharetta side, the Harrington side, on the right side, the east side. And then the last 25 feet is the non-impervious, meaning that you can't put any kind of impervious material on it, but you can grade in it. So it has to stay pervious, the last 25 feet. So that's what our requirements are. So, if you look at that stream buffer, that's going to become a de facto buffer to the lots in Harrington, in that area. So, unlike, many times in Alpharetta, there's rezonings, that they can condition a developer to say, I want you to provide a 50-foot buffer between single-family residences. That's their way of doing it. We don't have that opportunity to require the developer to do it, but I would make a statement that the stream buffer is actually more enforceable, because if somebody starts taking down trees in that 50-foot, then we go out and they have to stop and then replant what they took out or disturbed. And if they get into the 50 state, then we could, they can get in trouble with the state as well. So, hopefully that answers some of the residents' questions.
Just so I understand, right now, there's a 25-foot state undisturbed stream buffer.
Correct.
It's either from the top or the center line, or whatever. And then, there's a 50-foot county undisturbed stream buffer. That's not an addition of the 25, correct? That's just a 50-foot?
Well, it's like 25 and 25 for a total of a stream buffer. The first 25 is the state, the next is the city.
So in the 50 feet, they can't do much of anything?
Correct, you can't do anything.
And then there's a 75-foot imperious, so there's another 25 feet where they can grade, they just can't make any impervious developments?
Surfaces, correct, yeah.
Surfaces there. Okay.
Yeah.
And then, do you all want to answer some of the other points?
We talked about the trees. You know, developers don't like to take down trees. It's necessary sometimes, we want to preserve all the trees we can. It does add character. We have to plant them back if we take them down, so we try to preserve all the trees that we can. As far as the naming of the subdivision, we did, our marketing team did research English Oaks, but there was one in close proximity. We can go back into that and see, but it did seem like it was going to be a problem for 911. If not, we can easily name it English Oaks.
And then, I think one other question he had was about the location of the retention pond, and if there was any way of potentially moving it back.
More of a technical question? Yeah. You've got the stream buffers there, almost encircling it, so to push it back, we can't.
Can't.
Yeah. So the project's going to honor all the buffers, perimeter, streams, yeah. And that's, I think, in the best interest of the project and the neighbors, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next comment?
We have Mark King.
Good evening. Mark King, 13225 and 13255 Bethany Road. This proposed development simply doesn't work, because it's inconsistent in several material respects with City of Milton's comprehensive plan. There've been several questions that have come up, that have alluded to some of the reasons why. And to the extent that it can be developed at all, and to the extent the applicant wants to meet his stated purpose of saving as many trees as possible, it should not be approved for anything more than four parcels on three acres each, and here's why. You have to focus and look very carefully at where this is located. It is located at Bethany Road and Mayfield Road, the intersection of which is considered a gateway to the City of Milton. This property tells people when they drive into Milton what Milton is. Right now, if you look at the specific property carefully, I encourage you to take a very careful look at a narrow view of it that's current, more than half of it, and I would submit probably more than, closer to two-thirds of it, is dense tree canopy. I know this because it adjoins my property. The tree canopy speaks to the nature of the City of Milton, when folks drive into it, as a rural community, a pastoral community, a scenic community, a horse community. Having 21 parcels on one-acre lots speaks to a future heat desert. That's not the image the city is trying to project, or that it wants to project in the future. The future land map on the comprehensive plan refers to this specific parcel as agricultural, equestrian, or estate residential. If we take the applicant's proposed meaning of what the agricultural definition is, it strips away any possible meaning for the estate residential term, and that renders the whole provision absurd, which simply doesn't work. What is estate residential? Ask yourself the question. Sounds like three to five acres. In fact, the comprehensive plan says so. So, without removing the trees, rough math, take a look at the parcel, I think that you could remove, you could rather build four estate homes on three acres each, and nothing more. Disturbing the trees would disserve not only what Milton is, but what it desires to be. And I strongly urge you to consider not doing that.
Thank you. Robin, do you want to? Robin, do you just want to clarify in terms of, I mean, again, this...
Yes, yeah, the plan, okay.
I mean, what this is actually, yeah, this is currently AG1.
So, the comprehensive plan currently, as well as the proposed new plan that should be adopted in October or so, does designate this area as agricultural, estate, equestrian, estate residential. Within the plan, one-acre AG1 lots are consistent with the AEE designation, though. Obviously, as I stated earlier, we did encourage and we tried to convince the developer to do large lots, and so that was not his ultimate decision. So, per the zoning ordinance, they can do one-acre lots, and it's still consistent with the comprehensive plan, so. Sorry.
There was a comment, but I'll let you, if you can, you have filled out a comment card? Okay. If you don't mind doing so, then, you know, please come up and you can make your comment too. Okay. Thank you, Robin. Are there any other?
Yeah. Rob?
Rob Carum.
Carum?
Hi, Rob Carum. I'm at 1380 and 1400 Mayfield Road. So, could you put the map back on these screens for me?
It's sorry, AV person in the back.
Here it goes. There it is. So, my property is adjacent to everything on the right side of this development. You're talking about... Mine's more sort of a technical issue. I'm concerned about the drain...
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Sorry. I'm concerned about the drainage on this property. And, you know, it seems to me it would have been better maybe to get with the neighbors as you were doing this, so we could understand it, then we wouldn't come up here blind, I haven't had a chance to study this, I haven't seen it, until today. But anyway, set that aside. The way the water flows in the back between our homes, Harrington Falls and mine, and that property, you put retention, the way the topography looks to me now, is that retention pond would be higher than my property, potentially, which might would back up water, which would potentially back up water onto my property, and that would be unacceptable to me. I don't know whether Milton City has looked at that and approved it, or the county, I'm not sure who's responsible for that activity, but I think that really needs to be looked at, the drainage back there. Because there's already problems, not with this gentleman's property, but behind me in Harrington Falls, the homeowner back there, and I can't imagine did it with approval, dumped 40 or 50 truckloads of dirt back there, and has changed the topography to make that flow even worse. So it's exacerbated, right? And I get it, they're trying to make their yard look nice, but it has changed the characteristic of the flow of the water there. And I'm not sure what studies you've done, I'm happy to look at whatever you've done. If you've solved that problem, then, okay. But, the way it's being described now, I can't see that as being solved, or thought through well, especially if you're not touching that, except for putting the retention pond. I think you're going to exacerbate a problem for neighbors around there. So, that's one issue. You have other, a big issue for me.
I'm sorry, you need to speak into the mic and not to them.
I did not see this.
Yeah, if you could please state your name for the record, too.
My name is Linda Carum, and we own the property at 1380 Mayfield Road and 1400 Mayfield.
Thank you.
So we're right next door to these homes, or these potential homes, but the arc runs right through our property. And I'm just, as a good neighbor, I would have liked to have known that before tonight. And what does that mean for our properties? Because we have sewer on both, excuse me, we have septic on both properties as it is now, and we'd like to keep it that way. And if it, I've never been one to want to tell people what to do, or what not to do at their property, because it's their property, but because of that sewer arc, I am concerned about that. So, and if I had a wish list, and it is, again, it's not my property, but I would love for it to be one to three-acre lots. So, and that drainage, the retention pond in the back, just seems like it, the topography, our lots are lower than where that is stated, if I'm understanding the map correctly.
Thank you.
I'm Tyler Marchman with Alliance Engineering. I can speak a little bit to the stormwater pond.
If you can just state the address, too?
Sure, we're at 299 South Main Street in Alpharetta. So as far as that stormwater pond is designed, it does have some bypass that goes into the stream, but the majority of the site will go into the pond. If you look right there to the left, so everything to the right, you know, most of those homes will get into the pond still, but the backs where most of the undisturbed area will be, will continue to kind of bypass and continue into that stream, and join into the mainstream at that confluence to the north.
And I'll also make a statement, obviously, they haven't submitted their land disturbance permit, so that's when all the very specific hydrology is done for the site, but I know that they've done a fair amount already to be able to design the pond in such the way that we required them to do, that my understanding is that water should not run off of the site, but should be contained on the property. Therefore, there shouldn't be any runoff onto the adjacent properties to the east. If you also look at the stream, I'm assuming that anything that comes off of those lots, like 12 and 13 and 14, you know, they're going to go into this, you know, if they don't go into the attention pond, they're probably going, a little bit of runoff would go toward the stream. And then, also, to the south, where the speaker was talking, where he lives on Mayfield, all that stormwater is supposed to drain toward the road, and then go into pipes that go into the storm drainage area to the north. So, it is our rules and regulations not to have stormwater go off of the development. Yeah.
And that, yeah, that's good to note that, because this has not been designed yet. This is, I mean, at this point, it hasn't been submitted for review of design, I should say it that way. This is just preliminary plat, getting the layout correctly.
Robin, what about the question in regards to the Carum's property staying septic?
Right, so, yes, they can stay septic, there's nothing that is going to force them. In fact, I think their property is so large that they wouldn't really be eligible to go into being sewer, because we're requiring that 100% of a property be within that sewerable area. So, it's fine for the, you know, for them to remain the same as they always have.
Okay.
For both properties? Oh, so you have, yes, even yours, if you, yeah, okay. Even the second one, there's a little bit of your property, the skinnier rectangle is outside of the sewerable area, so we're not going to make anybody go to sewer.
Sure, please.
Throw it back up there again, please, the map.
Just keep it to the map, until we're done.
Thanks. You may have said that the 12, 13, and 14, you would assume would go into the stream. I don't think that's a correct assumption. You have to walk the property to see. 12, 13, and 14, depending on the grading, depending, willing to look at that, sure, is going to go right into my yard.
So as I just stated, if you're back here, off the property, the regulations are such that no runoff should go off of the property.
But all of this, all of this slope comes into my yard, depending on what they do with the grading. See, I don't know what they're going to do.
And so what the engineer said is they haven't completed the full land disturbance permit set of drawings that has the complete hydrology, which also would include all of where the water goes. I am just saying that per the code, that water runoff cannot go off of the project.
They approve what? Moving this on without understanding what the impact's going to be? How do you guys do that?
So, the purpose of the preliminary plat is just to look at the layout of the lots, and to make sure that it meets the zoning and subdivision regulations, not, at this point in time, there are some other regulations that have not been examined, because they have not been submitted. So, this is just a process of the public to be able to give their input as far as concerns like you've heard tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll have to wait and see, I guess. Thank you.
And sir, I mean, I know this has come up a couple of times, but do you mind elaborating a little bit more in terms of the number of lots that you're proposing for this property, and the concerns that the community has about that?
Well, the allowable number of lots are 21, and so we're not trying to exceed the allowable number of lots. We're just simply asking for what is allowable, and 21 on the 34 acres is allowable.
Thank you. Okay. Do you have any other, next comment?
Stu Lobenstein? I'm sorry, it's hard to read. I'm sorry.
I'm Stu Lobenstein, I live at 13015 Harrington Drive in Harrington Falls. Did I understand the comment that there would be no change to Mayfield Road? Is that accurate? No turning signals, no turning lanes?
There'll be a right turn lane, like a D cell.
So, might I suggest there be a left lane? And for those of you that drive along Mayfield, I assume everyone does, you know, at rush hour going into that roundabout, it's, the roundabout helps, but it's a busy road. So coming from the roundabout towards Alpharetta, I can only envision 42 cars, 21 times two, the Amazon drivers, the long guys trying to take a left turn, and having that traffic back up, back into the roundabout. I just don't see how traffic can flow freely without a left-turning lane. So I would suggest if that's possible, we consider that.
As stated earlier, this is the right of way of the City of Alpharetta, and the applicant has gone to the city engineer at City of Alpharetta, and that's what they're requiring them to do. So if you have issue with that, I would recommend you go to the City of Alpharetta.
With support from ELO? With support from the City of Alpharetta?
We, so, we...
Got a comment.
Many times, we have different jurisdictions own the right of way versus the land, and it is up to the city that owns the right of way to dictate what improvements will be required. They obviously understand that there would be 21 lots being developed. They have charts and numbers, and, you know, it's transportation engineering to determine, you know, what is appropriate for turn lanes, and they're the most familiar with their right of way and what their needs are, so.
Well, it looks like there was somewhat of a traffic study done, you know, where it says that...
Right, so this was done, because this is what was requested by the city engineer, or the person who reviews transportation in the City of Alpharetta.
And again, according to this, it says, based upon assumed peak traffic volume of 600 opposing vehicles per... "Based upon assumed peak traffic volume of 600 opposing vehicles per hour, 305 advancing vehicles per hour, and 21 left turns per hour, a left lane turn lane, a left turn lane is not warranted for this development."
So this was, yeah, so this was, that analysis was done by the applicant's engineer, but it had to be submitted to Mr. Graves, who's the engineer in Alpharetta. And it says, "The updated memo meets the city's requirement. No left turn is required from the city of Alpharetta."
What's the date of that, Terry?
It was from April 27th of this year.
Okay. Next comment?
The next comment is Pete Campbell.
Thank you. I'm Pete Campbell. I live at 245 Bayolt Road, which is the Trotters Ridge subdivision, which is north of the traffic circle. Kind of always knew that this property was going to be developed, but I'm surprised that it seems to be going against Milton's basic AGU-1 land use plan, which calls for one home per acre on septic. And I noticed this little umbrella of sewer that can't be expanded. I'm surprised, I don't know how that ever got in there, that little pocket. But what I see here with this, to me, being someone that's been attracted to this area and the fact that Mayfield North was always going to be septic tank, no matter what the developments were going to be. This, to me, shows that there's going to be sewer creep. Starts here, this little umbrella, and I don't know how that even got passed because it is north of Mayfield. So I don't even know how that got in that map originally. But that's a concern for all of us that live north of Mayfield. And the fact that, what's going to prevent future homeowners, if this starts the ball rolling for sewer north of Mayfield, what's going to prevent further people on Bethany that own, you know, three and five acre lots from combining, which we've already heard, they could may do that. They would combine with other landowners and possibly sell that property. Sewer taps start here. It would seem to me that it'd be pretty easy for them, the legislature, to log with Fulton County Sewer to be able to get increased sewer access, which to me goes against the whole rural integrity of this area and what we're trying to protect. So I have grave concern that the planning commissioner, whoever did it, even allowed this to start. Two to three acre estate homes, yeah, I could see that all day long in that lot. You know, homes on .62 acres with sewer access to me, I just think...
No, 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 it's not .6. So that's the density. All of those lots that are within that umbrella are minimum one acre lots. They are no different than the sewered lots, sir. So that's the density overall. You have 34 acres, then you divide 21.
But it's still access, it's going to still be access to sewer. It's not going to be septic.
So let me explain, just like with the developer, we did not even allow them to sewer the parcels or the lots that were even in, partially within that umbrella. So it stops. No further expansion of sewer will occur because every, you can't. North of there.
To that, that boundary line that you've identified. That's still a start.
So if somebody wanted to do sewer, they would have to go to the city council to amend the map.
I get it, but you know, that's where it starts. The developers, we look around and see what's going on around here. You know, I know development's going to happen. I'm not fighting development. I'm just fighting the integrity of this property and this area that we've all enjoyed living in. That's just the start. That's, to me, representative of sewer creep. And that's what's concerning to me. And I should, I would think it would be to all residents looking at this.
I'm going to, that sewer line is part of an existing agreement. It's not anything that developer has created. They're depicting what is shown on an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county, which established an agreement as to the scope and extent of sewer that would be extended within the city of Milton in this particular instance. So that, that does not have anything to do... If anybody wants to have a question, I'll be happy to address them. If they want to come up and ask the questions. I just want to explain, the developer did not create that. It's a depiction of what the existing state is.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. So the next comment is, has been asked to be read into the record. This is from Tim Inlow. And he is located, just, let me get his address here. He's on Bethany Road, oh, 13075 Bethany Road. He says he's a third generation owner of Stable Day's Farm, initially purchased in 1978 with horses, agriculture, safety, and quiet being the reasons. To date, not one of these reasons have been protected by your city. Regarding the upcoming destruction of a 64-year-old English farm with yet another suburban subdivision taking its place, I am truly concerned regarding the following as I am the only property that has horses which borders a subject property and the only property remaining on our section of Bethany Road with such. One, in speaking with Robin, the proposed one acre retention pond will be 200 feet from our barn built in 1967. Mosquitoes, flies, and other biting pests can be deadly to horses. Eastern equine encephalitis, encephalitis, I can't talk, is a viral illness that is transmitted to horses through the bite of an infected mosquito. Retention ponds are notorious for being a breeding ground for such. The developer is developing to make money, nothing wrong with that. Once he sells out of his product at the site, he will move on with the HOA taking control. What is your city going to do to ensure that our horses are not put in harm's way due to increased insect activity? Fireworks can cause severe injury and death to horses. This past June, one of our horses was severely injured due to commercial grade fireworks being shot off costing us over $3,000 to date. No doubt, residents of the subdivision will direct such towards the retention pond and therefore towards our barn where our horses sleep. What is the developer and city going to do to ensure that this does not happen? To be clear, if this does transpire putting our animals in danger, we will shot, we will shoot fireworks back towards the subdivision. Three, horses are large animals that can be dangerous due to size and strength. No trespassing signs will be officially posted along our property line. Also, do not touch, feed the horses signs will be posted as well. Please require this developer to inform would-be residents that under no circumstances is anyone from this development allowed to trespass or touch our animals. Four, we are, we are an agriculturally zoned 6.3 acre parcel. We legally burn land debris on our parcel on a regular basis in addition to depositing manure piles with rotation often. Ensure that said developer and would-be residents are not only made aware that the state of Georgia is a buyer beware state, but also that Georgia Code 2-1-6 is a state law that both counties and cities must abide by. Five, there are various creeks on subject property, from active creeks to underground springs to dry creek beds. Please ensure that these protected waterways are not disturbed in any way. In closing, your city continues to promote the narrative that what is now Milton is an equestrian city, placing horse images, statues, et cetera everywhere. Yet there are no equestrian parks, tack shops, equine vets, ferriers, and with North Fulton Feed closing in August, there will be no places to buy feed or hay within your city. Should your city truly want to preserve the leak, quickly vanishing and few remaining horse farms, I implore you to ensure all numbered points herein are addressed legally, recorded, and enforced. Protect what you claim to be. Tim Inlow, Stable Day Farms, since 78. And that concludes all the comments that we have. So Susan Bloom?
Hi.
Hi.
Susan Bloom, 13095 Bethany. I'm right behind, I'm right next to, oops, it just disappeared.
This is going to recover, yeah.
Lot 11, I guess that would be. So my, my back, back of my property will, I guess, face the undeveloped section. I have a concern about the retention pond as well for the same reasons for mosquitoes and bugs and just what's going to happen to the whole water, the hydrology of that area. So I have a concern about that. And I also want to know what's going to, the plan is for the undeveloped area because a lot of times HOAs will, you know, all of a sudden decide they're going to put trails back there or that would be a great place for a kid's playground or, and all of a sudden, you know, things are starting to happen that were never intended to happen. Now, I know it's very sloped because I live right there, but like the gentleman said, dirt can be brought in and change the whole area. So I'd just like to know what the plan is, what the requirements on the HOA are going to be for the undisturbed area. That's my question.
Yes, the area where the pond and the other undisturbed area is to remain undisturbed. And for the purpose of this discussion, that's how it will remain. Now, once it goes to the homeowner association, you know, they would have to solicit something from the city to go back in there and clear it, which I'm sure wouldn't be allowed because it's, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be left as it is for the right now. So I don't think it's a possibility that it could be graded or otherwise cleared in any future moment.
But there's the stream buffers back there, right, Robin?
There's stream buffers as well, and it is very slow. There's no reason to clear anything back there.
Right. They can't, and we've even had instances where kids started playing on the bank of a stream and basically the HOA had to restore what the kids did or they did. They had to go out and work and restore it because it was against, you know, the regulations of the state. So even something as mundane as kids going to play at the creek is definitely up for grabs to be in violation.
Okay. All right, does anybody else have any other questions for the applicant, staff? If you could please come back up.
Just one more question. Since the sewer problem question has been asked, why not put all of them on septic and forget the sewer? Why are you doing half sewer and half septic? Why not just keep everything septic? We've lived in our house for 50 years, never had a problem. Keep them all septic. Make everybody around Mayfield. We're not selling out on Bethany Road, so there won't be sewer on our properties until maybe we're gone. But just keep it septic. Don't let sewer come in, period, period, period.
The utilization of the designated area for sewer does not increase the density. There are definitely people that want to be on sanitary sewer as opposed to septic tank. And that's why we intend to utilize the area allocated for sewer as sanitary sewer.
Whoa, whoa, sir, 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 if you don't mind, if you want to make another comment, please come up.
If I had a choice between septic or sewer, and I like to water my lawn, I want septic. It's very expensive to pay for sewer when you water your grass, number one. Number two, the reason to hook up the sewer is because it's cheaper for the builder. So let's be clear about that. You don't care about whether a customer wants septic or sewer. It's about the dollars and cents. And while I'm up here, I want to say one other thing about the trees again. I am very concerned, all along this creek, that 50 feet, 75 feet is not enough. And we're going to have runoff into that creek. And it's going to change the way water flows naturally. Mr. Karam is right. He's going to have a lot of water. And how in the world can you allow this to move forward until we go to phase two of this discussion, which we have, which is where we would have answers? Because once this leaves here, I know what's going to happen. The next group is going to do what they want, and we're not going to have a voice. So I think we need more information. We need more promises. And we need the backing of the city of Milton to see that those promises are kept, especially with regard to water, the retention pond, and the trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Either one, we'll let, go ahead.
Well, it's a very similar answer to the previous one in that, you know, we do build and sell houses for a living. There are definitely people that would rather be on sanitary sewer than septic. It's allowable based on the interpartial agreement between Fulton County and the city of Milton. And we're not increasing density, but we do intend to put those homes on sanitary sewer. Any stormwater runoff will have to be complied with from by the city and the state regulations. So our land disturbance permit will not be issued until our plans reflect that we are in accordance with all the guidelines as far as runoff, detention, everything having to do with that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Robin, do you have anything else?
I don't have anything further other than if, I'd be happy to have correspondence with the, with the neighbors to make sure that they're aware of when the LDP is submitted and if they want to have their own expert look at it as well or whatever. They have the rights, you know, to look at it. But, and to work with the applicant together to make sure it comes out the way that it is regulated to do and it satisfies. But that would be between the homeowners and the applicant and the builder.
And Robin, do you mind, sorry, just, do you mind just maybe laying out a little bit more on the process, you know, where it goes to the LDP?
Right, yeah.
And then, you know, how, where the community could get involved again with the community development director, you know?
Correct, so that's what I was kind of alluding to is that this process is only to look at the lot layout, making sure that the subdivision regulations are met as well as zoning regulations are met. And not yet, as I mentioned before, has the full land development plans, engineering plans have not been completed yet. Once they're submitted, then our plan review engineer will review it as well as the city engineer to make sure that it's in compliance with all the city and state regulations as it pertains to erosion control and all those land development aspects. So for the purpose of this meeting, that is not, we're not to review what the land development regulations are. We're just looking at the subdivision regulations as well as zoning ordinance. So that's, and again, we've had other circumstances where neighbors are interested in what is occurring on a development that's going to happen. And I would encourage the developer to reach out to the, to the neighbors to have a good rapport with them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Was the developer, did the developer look at, instead of 21, did they even consider a different plan of size of lots?
Well, it was always our intention to utilize the property under the guidelines that we were given. And, you know, it is able to be developed into 21 one acre lots. And our feasibility study for us dictated that we do that. So that's why we went that direction.
Thank you.
So the guy that had the statement read into the record, nobody commented on that? Either from you all up here or the developer? That just is kind of for the record? I mean, I'm kind of flabbergasted that nobody had a comment on that. Developer or commission? Maybe that's protocol?
We can make...
This guy's looking at his phone over here.
We can make comments afterwards. Public is finished.
When the public comment is done, they can ask questions.
Then we start our discussion.
I, I would, I would encourage you to respond to that because I thought the guy made some very valid points about the city of Milton. And we entrusted you all with that analysis. And we have somebody that, you know...
That's why if you, a point was made to the developer was directly referenced that reading about horses, sewer.
Yeah.
I made that.
He still hasn't answered that question, though. You made a good comment from your work in Indiana, but he still hasn't had a comment about that.
But that's up, again, if this is all approved, that homeowner has to know that.
Okay, I would just, I would encourage you gentlemen to respond to the person who wrote very, five very valid points to the city of Milton that kind of seemed to fall on deaf ears. very valid points to the City of Milton that kind of seemed to fall on deaf ears and was just read into the record, but maybe there's more to come, so I'll look forward to that.
I believe this is the end of the public comment, so.
And, Robin, pass this on our comments, goes to the city council.
No, it does not. It goes to the Community Development Director. Okay.
Good.
Yeah. And then, I-
Where, again, they, the public have notification for their development of this problem.
They do not. So the, the only, yes.
Shh, go ahead, Robin. Whoa, 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 please, please, whoa, stop, stop. If we need to make any, open up the public comment, I'm happy to do that, but please just follow the protocol and come back up here, and you can make additional comments on that. Happy to allow that. We'll open it back up. Thank you.
So I moved from the nine acres across from Cogburn because of the development there, went through from start to finish, where the developer met with us, starting at Kroger, and we actually, the City of Milton paid for a mediator, which was useless, waste of our money, because he just basically, anyway, but we, they listened to us, they, you know, so why, at this point, we can't be heard after?
So let me, I was here, I've been here the whole time.
Oh, I know, I know.
So basically, in that situation, the developer wanted to rezone the property and to, to increase the density than what was the existing AG1 property that was at the time.
And to bring sewer off Highway 9. That's where the sewer was being brought off of Highway 9.
Correct.
And that's to be done, because it was going to, from there, they were going to be, it was going to be allowed to go down Cogburn, because they were budding off, off from Bethany, off of Highway 9 to Bethany to Cogburn. And so, because of sewer. And that's where we were trying to keep, prevent the sewer from going further into Milton.
So what, the reason why there was public, there, it went to Planning Commission, it went to City Council, there was a CZIM, and ultimately there was negotiations, was because the applicant, the developer, was requesting to rezone from AG1 to a higher density. So this is not a rezoning process, this is a preliminary plat, that by right, that the applicant can develop one-acre lots on AG1 without going through a rezoning process, which would, so that therefore, there is no other further public hearings or public input on this project. So it is, the applicant is only doing what the zoning ordinance allows within AG1, which is one-acre lots.
I guess my, I'm not, I understand, it's your property, and you purchased it, you have the right to do the best, you know, get the most out of it, I get that. I guess it's y'all that I'm appealing to. You represent us. How can you make, like they said, how can you make a decision without having all the answers? Without hearing the concerns of, I, you know, I, we're sitting pretty, pretty good where we, where we are, so maybe I don't have a right to be standing up here, but they're my neighbors, and the concerns that they have clearly are legit. And, I mean, I could just see, I mean, your front yard is just one big puddle on an average rain day, you know, so I just, I just think you need more answers.
Anybody else have any other comments, or they want to come back up? Please.
I want to understand the process, so at this point, us residents really have nothing to contest this project going forward at this point, even though it's, it's in contrast to the Milton Land Use Plan, which has been approved by the commissioners, even if we went to our commissioners and said, this is anathema to what the Milton policy is.
So I respectfully disagree with the statement that it's inconsistent with the plan. It is not inconsistent with the comprehensive-
Okay, I'm sorry, it's one acre, one acre lots, which I understand, but I think the land use plan has always been one acre per lot on septic.
Not necessarily, sir. So I can give you the instance of the manor is on sanitary sewer and their one-acre lots.
They've got their own, they've got their own in-house sanitation, septic sewer system.
But they're also on sanitary sewer, just like this would be, whether it's from Fulton County or Forsyth County. But we are standing steadfast that they have to be one acre, so it's consistent with the land use plan.
Could we take that up with our Milton commissioners, when we have a neighbor standing up?
The city council, and we've just completed doing a full, working on the comprehensive plan, and, you know, it is still remaining the same as that one acre are permitted as AEE, agriculture, equestrian, estate residential. If it's your desire to make, known your opinion that you would like to have lot, minimum larger lots, because that's really what it would take in the zoning ordinance to change what the minimum lots are, then it's definitely, I would invite you to go to the city council to make your opinion made, heard.
I'm just curious, the, the agreement between the City of Alpharetta and Fulton County-
Yes.
On that little umbrella area?
It's not Alpharetta, it's City of Milton.
City of Milton, I'm sorry, Fulton County.
Correct.
And agreement.
Correct.
Is that a green?
It's, it's been in place for a while and amended at various times, and I don't have the specific dates.
So, yeah. So the original, intergovernmental agreement for Fulton County to serve sanitary sewer and water, and more importantly, the sewer part, has been in existence since the beginning of the city. Because that was part of, when we became a city, there had to be multiple intergovernment and government, intergovernment agreements with the county for health department, for animal control, and in the very beginning, until we had a police department, we had to agree to allow them to police us until April of 2017, I mean, '07. So that was part of becoming a city.
So at that point, if we would have known that that little piece was apportioned north of Mayfield, I suspect that a lot of us probably would not have been happy, because that's always been what we understood the land use plan to be, north of Mayfield was septic, and that seems to be contrary. That is a main, Jackson.
Sure, come on.
I figure you guys probably missed me, so I thought I'd come back and add two more things very briefly. The applicant's response to every criticism, which each criticism seems to me to have been very well found, and I think it has to each of you as well, has been that it's allowable. First of all, it's not, unless you eviscerate the plain meaning of our land use plan, because agricultural, equestrian, and estate residential, okay, this is not estate residential, and the way they propose to use it, it's not agricultural. This is an end run around the plain meaning of the contract that we have with the city, that the city is obligated to enforce, and we vociferously demand be enforced. Second of all, if it were allowable, which it's not, but if it were for the sake of argument, well, you know, each of you and each of your children and each of your grandchildren could eat McDonald's three times a day, in fact, everybody in the City of Milton could do it. It's allowable. Nobody could stop any of us. But is it desirable? Is it advisable? Would any of you allow any of your family members to do that? Because they're going to turn out like the guy in Super Size Me in the hospital. This is undesirable, it's unapprovable, and I implore you to consider this carefully.
Any other, anybody else want to make any other comments? Okay. Applicant, would you like to make any other comments? Would you like to respond to anything in terms of the, the one by Tim Inlow that was read into the record?
Well, certainly, we intend to be a good neighbor as a developer to the residents. You know, we're not trying to be intrusive or invade anyone's rights. I understand that he's lived there a long time, and he has horses. My wife has horses. I'm attuned to the issues. We're in no way going to infringe on his rights, we're going to do everything we can to stay within our boundary, to stay within the regulations, and be a good neighbor. Do not intend to fire fireworks in this direction at any point. You know, the, we're not creating mosquitoes, we're not doing a lot of the things that matter. I mean, you know, we tend to comply with all the regulations and be a good neighbor. We have no intention of being anything other than that.
Thank you. Robin, do you mind just giving the comment on, you know, what, what is allowed and when fireworks are allowed?
Correct. So within the city ordinance, there's a fireworks section, they are limited to, we cannot, per state law, even as a city, we tried to eliminate fireworks altogether, but it's not permitted per the state law. And it is only, fireworks are only allowed to be set off during certain holidays, during certain times. I can get you the specifics, I'll have to look it up. But it's not 24/7, it's not, you know, if somebody starts doing fireworks on tonight, this, tonight is not one of the dates that is permissible to shoot fireworks, so if somebody calls the police, then they can go and try to figure out who's doing, shooting the fireworks and, and deal with it, so. But I can get you the more specifics of it if you want.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the public understood, obviously, that there's a city ordinance that revolves around when fireworks can be done in the city.
Correct.
And it's, you know, not based on subdivisions or locations of where horse farms might be.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions for the applicant or for staff?
I just want to make sure that it's understood by the public that the hydrology is not within our preview. We, we have nothing to do with that. But there's, there is a way for them to find out when it's resolved, what they're going to do, before it's actually done. Isn't that true, Robin?
Yeah, that's why I'm encouraging the developer to work with some of the neighbors, to let them know, I mean, obviously, it's public record, once a land disturbance permit, it's very big, it's like 50, 60 pages of large plans, and so they're more than welcome to come and look at those from the city. But I would, like I said, if there's somebody who has expertise from the community and they look at it, they're more than welcome, I mean, I would think the applicant would be happy to answer their questions, or the applicant's engineer, to address the issues that they might see. Again, they can also, we'd be happy, our plan review engineer, who is a very seasoned and experienced professional engineer in civil engineering, would be happy to answer any questions of the public once the development plans are in. We can't do anything until they're in, so I would, that's what I would-
Is there a way that we can communicate to the homeowners, or where do the homeowners go to know when they can ask those questions or see that information?
They can reach out to me at the City of Milton, so.
And again, the timeline, I think, was brought up earlier, but approximately, how long is it going to take for that LDP?
So I don't know how long it's going to take the engineer to produce the plans, maybe another month or so, you'd have to ask them, and then it'll take us probably a good couple of months to review thoroughly and give comments. So once we receive the plans, the engineer, the arborist, the transportation, not so much the transportation engineer, will make sure it's compliant with the City of Alpharetta's requirements. Zoning, I look at it, we make sure everything is in compliance with the city and state codes, and we give comments to the applicant or their engineer, and then they respond back to the comments, or things that might need to be addressed or corrected, and then they resubmit it, usually it takes two or three times of that dance going back and forth, and then once everything is resolved, then we would issue a land disturbance permit. So what I'm saying is, during that process, if some of the neighbors would like to look at the plans, we would be happy to show them the plans, and also make available our city engineer or our plan review engineer to answer any questions.
So they can just contact you-
Yeah.
During this timeline-
Myself or Tracy.
Or Tracy, so potentially over the next three months, they could be contacting you and kind of try to stay in the loop-
Correct.
And provide any comments or feedback before the permit's actually finalized.
And that happens quite a bit, where we have residents who'll call us and say, hey, what's the status of X, Y, or Z project? And that we respond to them and give them the information that we have. Many times, we have, even Ms. Shaughnessy, I think she's gone, but, you know, she's come to our city hall many times to look at plans, to see what's going on, so.
Robin, you spoke on behalf of the, the applicant there, saying that he'd be happy to sit down and work with, with our neighbors here. Is she, was she correct in that assertion, that you're ready to-
That's what I was wanting to state.
Please do.
Our plans are almost ready for submission, we've been working on it for some time, because we've had a good, long period to get ready for this. So we're more than happy to contact the particular homeowners in Harrington Falls and the one on Mayfield that butts up to us, and, and look at the specific drainage situation, see through the water flow, and make certain that it works for all parties.
Now, one of the gentlemen approached you as he was going back to his seat and asked for your card, and you said you didn't have any.
I didn't, I'm sorry.
So, so in any event, would you be willing to stay afterwards and work with these folks to give them your, your contact details and exchange information?
Fence line stake, I'm more than happy to stay after and, and speak with them and get their numbers, and David and Tyler Marchman, engineer, and we can all huddle up, not take any more of y'all's time, and work through these issues.
Okay, folks, they'll be right in the front here, so get them.
I'm going up that door.
That's a fire exit, right?
Any other questions that you have for the staff or for the applicant? Sure, come on up.
What do you want, houses?
Front 11 will be on Fulton County sewer. So all the houses beyond this arc will be on septic systems. So the lucky people up front get to pay a higher water bill, and people in the back have septic. And is that where the lines are going to stop? Is it etched in stone? It's Fulton County sewer system, not Milton. I just want to hear a clarification of that. And where does this arc continue out?
So I can show you what the whole map looks like.
And I'm pretty sure it goes with the photography of the land back there, so it shouldn't go any further north, because it goes downhill, and water doesn't run uphill real well.
So this is the arc here, and so it stops, so it's, you know, obviously, it's kind of hard to, we don't have the lot lines on here, but that's where it goes.
This etching got anything to do with this etching?
No, so this, to the west is a separate, this is an area that in the future, I mean, as you all know, there's undeveloped land over here, but eventually-
Not long.
Eventually, this area is actually in, portions of it is in the form-based code, not all of it, but, so yeah, this is the area on the north side of Mayfield.
I don't know how that arch got in there.
I do not know.
Fulton County sewer system?
Yes, so-
They're responsible for it.
Correct. So anytime, basically, we look at all the single-family permits or all permits, development or building permits, and so that's an area that we would make sure that there wouldn't be any sewer taps allowed. Obviously, the developer's only going to take the sewer line so far to serve those certain lots.
And who permits that?
Fulton County does. But it goes through a land disturbance permit that's going to be, we'll get approval, sign off in Fulton County sewer, that'll be submitted with the land disturbance permit, and we'll make sure that Fulton County has not extended the sewer, or the applicant hasn't, you know, pulled a wool over our eyes, so to speak, and extend it, and so that's something we'll be looking at at the land disturbance permit.
So that's etched?
In stone.
11 houses in, 10 houses out.
Right. Right.
Okay, and anybody else got any other, anybody else have any other comments in the public? Planning commission members, do you all have any questions for the applicant or staff?
No.
And so, one thing I just want to, I mean, I know we've talked about it a couple of times now, Robin, and/or the city attorney, but if you guys, I know that point has come up with the gentleman in the back, and I just want to make sure that, you know, the city can state on the record again in regards to this area and what the comprehensive plan allows for this area, and what has been in the comprehensive plan so far for this area, if you guys could state again one more time.
Sure. So, the agricultural, estate, residential, equestrian, AEE, in the comprehensive plan, there's a chart, and it talks about each category of land use. And in AEE, a permitted zoning district is AG1. And in the zoning ordinance, AG1 requires minimum one-acre lots with certain dimensions, lot frontage, et cetera. So, because this development is consistent with the AG1 zoning district standards, it is consistent with the AEE designation for the land use plan, future land use plan.
Does the city attorney have anything else to add?
Nothing to add to the, it is the requirement that staff go through the proposal and ensure that it is consistent with the zoning ordinance. And before presenting it to you, the purpose of this is to mostly give notice of the development ahead of time, so that if there's anything that wasn't revealed in the process, that wasn't information that was otherwise presented to staff, that the public has a chance to provide that missing information. It's not a rezoning of property, it's not even necessarily the planning commission's purview to evaluate the advisability of it. It's to confirm that it is meeting the city's requirements and meeting all of the code obligations that are applicable to a subdivision of property. And that's what is presented to you. You pass along your recommendations and comments to the director of community development, director, saying that you have conducted the meeting and any comments you may have with respect to that. And then the community development director will take that and apply the code to whether or not the submitted subdivision plan meets the code and can be developed or not.
And again, I mean, just to hear it from you as well, obviously, the planning commission is not here to approve or reject a preliminary plat. We're just here to facilitate this discussion, provide comments or recommendations that we may have.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Anybody else got any other questions? One other, I mean, I know, and I mean, it's a big thing for me, and I know I've been on the tree ordinance committee as well, and we've talked about this a lot in the past, and I just want to make sure, is there anything else that can be done with the plat itself to make sure that we can depict where those specimen trees are, and so that way we can somehow assure that those are still going to stay on this property?
So, along with the land disturbance permit will be a full, I mean, again, the applicant has stated they've done the survey, but that will be looked at at the land disturbance permit stage. And the arborist will look at what they're proposing to do. And if they, if she sees that, hey, they could, you know, preserve more trees if they keep the limits of disturbance, or increase the limits, or decrease the limits of disturbance to preserve more tree canopy or specimen trees, then she'll do her best to try to encourage them to do more than maybe what's required. But everything will be evaluated by the arborist to make sure it's in compliance with the tree canopy plan, so.
Okay. Is there, now, I know we've, you've mentioned this before in terms of what the process is going to be over the next three months, but is there any way that the applicant, you know, hearing all the concerns and knowing that there's a lot of more information that everybody wants to see, and obviously, you've got the arborist, you've got the community development director, you've got a lot of different people, you know, one comment that I would just have is I would encourage the applicant, A, of course, obviously, to make sure that you're communicating with the neighbors. B, if there's a way to potentially facilitate some sort of, you know, opportunity where everybody can be there, let's say it's here, the arborist can be here, whoever else can be here, and there's an opportunity, again, that's facilitated by the applicant through the city, somehow it's getting notified to the neighbors, hey, here's an opportunity, we've gone through some of this back and forth, but, you know, there's still an opportunity to provide any other comments or feedback with the applicant. Would you be able to, be willing to facilitate something like that?
Happy to discuss all reasonable inquiries with respect to trees and stormwater.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, has anybody else got any other comments for staff applicant questions? Okay. All right, at this point, I will open up the floor for any discussion or any recommendation or comments or recommendation that we may have for the community development director in regards to this preliminary plat.
My only comment would be, of the things that I've heard, make sure that they're heard. I don't know that we have any more power. Not like a rezoning where we can say, no, that house isn't going to have sewer, because it is outside the realm of sewer. Turn down the zone. But in this case, as Sumit has indicated, we don't have the opportunity looking at a plat to do that, mainly because comprehensive land use plan dictates that this individual applicant has the rights, then what we've set up in ordinances and in zonings, they have the right to do this. And I understand all of these very, very well. But all we can say is, pass along these comments to the arborists, to the land disturbance, pass along these comments, make sure that they're heard, and if there's an opportunity for you, go and say, that's not going to work, or here's why, do that. But we're here to hear this, hear your comments, and believe in me, they will be passed along to the gentleman who commented about the letter. That will be taken in and made clear. Most of the comments were all within applicants' ability to do.
Just building on that, I mean, I understand the frustration, okay? The vast majority of us don't want to see 34 acres turn into 21 more homes, let's be honest here. The other side of that, though, is, you know, as Fred was mentioning, there are property rights. When you buy a property, there are certain rights, and the city of Milton has gone and put a lot of conditions on those, you know, the setbacks, all those. But you buy that property, and a lot of that property value is based upon those property rights you have. So, the things like the AG1 being one acre, you know, whether it has estate in the name or not, AG1 zoning is one acre per house, and this is clearly within that. There's been some misinformation too about the whole, you know, sewer map. Now, that's been decided, and that's pretty much in stone, and I don't think you can get a councilperson to say we're going to extend sewer in the city of Milton, you know, in my lifetime. So, I think some of that stuff is, you know, there's some misinformation. Again, if you wanted, if you looked at lots 7 and 16 in this, if you were really trying to extend sewer, those are probably 90% within the sewer map, but they're not allowed by the city of Milton, so they're not in there. They're not, they're not going to be sewer, they have to be septic. So, you know, again, a lot of this is, you know, this is what makes Milton, Milton, the ability to come and have input, but also understanding that there are, there are both sides of this, that there's some things, you know, if I, if I look at this letter, I'm like, okay, shouldn't, you know, should a neighbor tell me, as long as I'm within the rights, where I should put my attention on? I don't know, I don't know if they should, they should have input, they should be able to say that, but, you know, some of the stuff, I think, just goes beyond, and again, we have to go to the, you know, the city zoning ordinances and other ordinances, and, you know, to preserve those property rights, because they help all of us here, even though we may not like them, even though we may not agree with this. This is, from what I can see, down to two digits to the right of the decimal point, you know, within the letter of the law, let's say, of what's allowable. Am I excited about that? No. But can I say, well, I'm going to change that? No, I can't, you know, that's not our job either. So, again, I understand everyone's frustration with this, because, you know, I think we all have that.
They also have any other comments or? Okay. Yeah, I mean, again, I would just say, to sum up the meeting, I mean, these have been great comments. I, we are, I'm very appreciative of you all coming out here. This is what this forum is about, this is what the city has set up this process for. And like I said before, we unfortunately don't have the opportunity to approve or reject a preliminary plat. We can facilitate this sort of a discussion, we can provide the comments and recommendations. I know the city will take that into consideration. I do hope that the applicant will also take that in consideration. I would implore and ask the applicant to make sure that they do, please, provide more opportunities to have some sort of collaboration with the neighbors. This is going to affect them, this is a part of our community, would, you know, just like you would want somebody else to do the same if they were developing beside you, I would encourage you to do the same for everybody else that's being affected by this, this project. And again, they do have the right to do that, and, but, again, we try to provide as much feedback as we can. I know the city has said that they've tried to ask them to create larger lots, but again, you know, they're meeting the requirements, and these are at least minimum of one acres, and they have met those requirements. So, again, I would just encourage that the applicant, the city, if the city can somehow make sure that that stays on the, and some sort of an agenda, that there is another opportunity somehow, and again, to make it more efficient, where you have an opportunity for the community members to come back and meet with you, city arborists there, community development directors there, you know, have that opportunity, that it makes it more efficient to provide the feedback and have the right people there who, you know, have that expertise that they can answer or provide those additional comments. At this point, I will open up the floor for any sort of recommendation. Opening it up.
I recommend, I'd like to make a motion that we forward the Heatherston 1240 Mayfield Road by Northport Capital Investment Holdings on with our approval.
I hear a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Any discussion? All I would add is a friendly sort of amendment, you know, towards that recommendation is, again, to make sure that, you know, we're taking into consideration, when we move this, move this forward, taking into consideration the stormwater concerns, the concerns for the, you know, the tree preservation on the property, and, you know, making sure that those are strongly considered when they finalize a plan, and obviously, all the land disturbance issues that may come about.
Well, I think I'd also like to interject, it might be a good idea to look at the process, you know, to add another step in the process, so it's not just, goes into a black hole from here, as a city.
Yes. Okay, at this point, that's the recommendation on the floor. I'll take a vote for this, anybody is all, who are all in favor of this, can you please say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all again for coming out. All right, Robin, I don't, next item, we don't have anything else on the agenda, is that right?
No, nothing else on the agenda, no.
Okay, open up the floor for a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All right, motion to adjourn by Fred, second by Mr. Gilbert. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.